It's six thirty. We'll begin the meeting. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Brittany Apple. Joseph Just.
Here.
Paul Stapleton.
Here.
Lee Solberg.
Here.
Connie Randolph.
Here.
Delray German is absent.
We have a court. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
I'll make a motion.
By Just, is there a second?
I'll second.
Solberg, discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. In the packets, you had minutes for our regular meeting on September thirteenth and the special meeting that was held on the twenty ninth. Are there additions, corrections, questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll support it.
Motion by Randolph, seconded by Stapleton, discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have the bills to pay for the month? Bill of office, I reviewed that. I think a number of the council members have reviewed that. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll approve.
By Randolph, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Apple, discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our liquor store manager isn't able to be with us this evening, but her report is submitted in your packet. Are there any questions regarding the report that I can convey to her? Excited to have the liquor store in you just to have good months. Okay, so no questions then. We'll go on to our chief of police Jim Crimmins.
Good evening.
Evening.
I really don't have anything tonight. I was going over some of the papers on our sheet I hand out every week. Last month, you asked about breaking down DUIs. There were fifteen DUIs in September. Ten of them were drug DUIs. Five of them were alcohol. So the majority of them are drug DUIs. Yeah. The other one that was high this month was assaults. We had twenty assaults. And I broke those down. Ten of them were domestic violence, which would be family members against family members. Five of them were juveniles. Four of them were against law enforcement officers. So four of the law enforcement officers got assaulted last month in the city. And one was just a regular assault. The four assaults on law enforcement officer were two city officers and two county officers. And county officers got assaulted helping the city officers. And it was the same person that did the assault.
Two different locations or...
What's that?
They're all four at the same location?
Yes. At different times.
At different times.
It was two separate incidents, two officers each time, but the same person all the time. So that's kind of breaking down on...
Yeah, well, that's a, it's a big number. It's really a number that jumps out on you in comparison to any other month. It's double the next highest.
Yeah, yeah. So it was, it was a busy month this last month.
Any questions for Jim?
Mr. Mayor got one.
Yes.
Uh, Jim, not a problem. None of my neighbors like it. You're a bunch of garbage. I think you know about it, you heard about it.
Yeah.
Something's gotten into the blocks of alley. People go through the alley. And, and I don't know who, who has it. It's property owners. If people live in there, it's responsible. It's a mess. It is a mess. It should not be that bad. Neighbors are complaining about it?
Yeah, we got, we got a complaint done on Sunday. Or wasn't one day?
Sunday.
Sunday we got a complaint about it. The officer who lives there, the dogs have gotten into the garbage. Uh, we addressed that. That will be the fourth time we've addressed that particular person with the dog. It's got one more time and the dog has to be removed from city limits. That's the dog making the mess. I know there's, it looks like dressers and everything else out there. Stuff that the garbage truck won't pick up. I don't know if we want to send him a letter tomorrow?
Because pretty soon the snow's going to start flying and maybe he'll end up getting a break.
I think that other guy is coming on Thursday. I'll definitely have him look at it.
Yeah, I think that's probably the most appropriate way to handle it right now since he's going to be here on Thursday. And I think perhaps when we have that discussion as part of our agenda, there may be some other properties that need to be brought to their attention as well when they're here on Thursday.
Mr. Mayor, I hope it goes right on, you know, for a week or two weeks or whatever. Something's got to be done soon.
But the police has had contact with them already?
We did on Sunday, yes. And that, that was for the dog carrying up the garbage, what that was. We'll be addressing.
What was their response?
I know behind Aaron's backyard, they still have a mess back there. It's a lot worse than what you have over there. I mean, that's junk upon junk upon junk. It has been there. I think we've addressed it already. I think we sent him a letter.
They received a letter the first go around, I understand, under the co-enforcement officer? And so I expect more has been added to it since then. I expect on Thursday that house would be addressed also. But it's three feet by seven feet and it's piled up that high.
See, I didn't know what to say about that.
But on, on Sunday, the dog was addressed. The dog got into the garbage and that's what we addressed on Sunday. We didn't address it. Well, I think Jeremy did talk to him about the junk, because he made a brief review of those two dogs in the garbage. Because you had garbage all over the yard, aren't there?
Yeah. That came over the tip.
Yeah.
The other thing too, should we put the city ordinances, the write-up in the paper about dogs barking in town? It's, it's all over, I think. Not just the library yet.
I think there is an ordinance on that.
Should we put it in the paper? Write it up, put it in the paper? Or is it there already?
There's an ordinance with regard to dogs barking and that is the ordinance that Jim's referencing when he addresses five more times.
Yeah.
You've, you've got to call and make the complaint because once they do hit five nuisance violations, they are instructed to remove the dog from city limits. But the complaints have to be made.
Do you know who the dog is or are you just hearing the dog?
Definitely, yes. And we've addressed two of them. There's two of them, at least two of them here. Three of them in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
The one we saw the day I was over there, I addressed that one with a letter, so.
Can we put the ordinance in the paper to show what ordinance is when it happens again or if it does happen again or...
I think you can, but...
I, I think that's the ordinance. That's new, that's the nuisance animal ordinance.
It would be very lengthy. And I don't...
And the, the thing is, the people that are violating the ordinance probably aren't reading the paper.
That's my question.
And, and I think, you know, when the violation occurs, it needs to be reported. And then the people need to be notified and they need to have a copy of the ordinance given to them at that time in person. And if it continues, then we follow our ordinance and we remove the dog.
Is that your process now when you respond? Do you hand them a copy of the ordinance?
The one, he's talking to, next to him, we got a complaint. We went over there, gave an ordinance, said, here's the ordinance. You gotta keep your dog quiet. Second time we got called, we wrote him a $200 fine ticket. The third time we got called, we wrote him a $200 ticket. Now this weekend, we got another call. It wasn't a barking call, but it was a nuisance animal. So the next time we get called, that we order to tell him to remove the dog. Yeah, we start out usually with a letter with the ordinance on it. That, that neighborhood is a problem. I, I think I've counted. There's at least four dogs within that block neighborhood that are, are problems.
Okay, other questions for the chief? Thank you. Street safety, our, our street superintendent is not able to be here this evening. We'll be going over some bids that we received for the skid loader. Have been in contact with him regarding those. So we'll call upon our water superintendent Gary Spencer for his report.
Evening, everyone. Not much to report. One thing I've got to report to the council tonight is starting Monday, we're going to start flushing fire hydrants. Start all flushing. Those high water use users will be notified. They may be discoloration in the water. I'll ask Marine Amber to put it on the chamber website so everybody knows. We'll get hold of Shilts and Lonner Matt, nursing homes and places like that. I'd have them know. Sorry about that. Other than that, not much else going on.
Questions for Gary?
Gary, is that just for one day or for a few days or...
Oh, it takes Mike about, about two weeks. You can't go too fast and he'll drain the water tower. About, about two weeks for the rest, probably the rest of the month.
No questions for Gary? Since Gary is there, I think we'll move into maybe one of our new business items. And it was mentioned on our last week, meeting. And that's the water leak that's located, you know, right to the north side of the property line between Three Bean Coffee. I took a look at that and some other people took a look at it as well. What they've done is, when water is leaking, the source is unknown. They put a sump, some tile, twelve inch tile, buried it in the ground. They got, they got a sump pump in there. If you look into some of that hole, there's water coming in there constantly. And they heard there's something out of there. Traditionally, that part of town, I don't know that we've got springs. So it looks like there's water coming from somewhere. I don't know, Gary. You're familiar with what's there. So I, I think they've had a request, from what I understand. Hams made a suggestion, I guess, to the property owners. If the city could turn the water off overnight for six hours or so, they could monitor that sump hole, see whether or not the flow changes at all. To determine whether or not there is a leak in the service line. It's not a leak in the main. The thing is, it's not going through a meter from what I understand. If it's leaking out of the service line, the city is losing some water that's, you know, not being metered. So there is a financial incentive, I guess, for us not to have our treated water being leaking somewhere. So, but it, it takes quite a coordinated effort. I, I think, how many businesses, businesses and how many individuals with that effect, if you would turn that off overnight?
Two businesses, fourteen houses.
So there's sixteen.
And two fire hydrants.
Sixteen locations. So if we did it, we'd have to notify the fire department. So they're aware of which fire hydrants would be dead for a period of time. And we'd have to notify, you know, all those property owners. To me, the only practical time to turn it off would be like ten o'clock in the evening, probably six o'clock in the morning and have those people being, or seven o'clock in the morning and have those people be notified that this is what's going to happen and this is what the purpose is. Is, is that reasonable? Is it possible for us to look at doing that? Lee, I think you're aware of it. I think Brittany, you're aware of it. It's in your ward. So I don't know. Do you have any other comments regarding taking that approach?
Will someone, Hams will be there to monitor it?
Yes, they'd have to. That'd be a condition. It's not, you know, up to you to monitor it.
And they know what the flow is?
They know what the flow is. And, and all, and I guess they would have, have to be done in such a time that it wouldn't be after a big rain or something like that. It sounds like, you know, maybe later this week or maybe next week, you know, if the weather clears, we get by the rain that's predicted tomorrow. And I don't know, you know, if it'd be better to do on a weekend or not. I, I don't know. Probably not. It would be better to do on a weekday overnight, wouldn't it? At the least impact?
Nobody works overnight, so they're all home at night, so.
Yeah.
I guess it might be a sanitary issue. You can use your toilet.
Yeah, but if people are notified, what they can do is put a little extra water in the bathtub or whatever is a reservoir. They can still put water in their toilet tank, flush. You know, it's just a matter of you can't shower, wash clothes, things like that, you know?
But if just before overnight, like you said, it's a standard.
Yeah.
I think that'd be convenient if you knew it, like you said. And we'd know if it's going to quit, you know, look out or what.
I, I guess, is it, is it reasonable for us to look at doing that? I guess we probably don't. Who's going to be affected and we can give them a letter or a, I don't know, personal knock on the door or something?
I think that'd be the right thing to do. Right now, like you said, by wasting city water that's not being monitored. And right now, they're pumping it down the city sewer that we're not charging them for. Right now, they're not supposed to be doing that. If they start putting it on the street this winter, we're going to have a icy, messy street. It's already pretty saturated over there. Last time I was down there, it was pretty dry and that ground gets saturated. It's going to work its way to the road as soon as it starts freezing.
Do you know, do you have an idea where their service line connects to the main? Is it on Fifth Avenue East or is it connect on 100 Highway 10?
Three B?
Yeah.
It's on Fifth Avenue Third.
Okay.
O'Connor's is right there.
Okay.
It'd be dug. Either way, it's going to have to be dug up and fixed.
Yeah, that's what I told him too. I said, because I was under the influence, there used to be an old trailer else there at one time. Some were stuck in there that went in the rain.
Back when I was probably still in Dayton.
Yeah, I don't know. O'Connor said they remember it, but if that got abandoned and then that fixed that old sewer now, it's not getting into the old pipe and disappearing because they can't get into the blast there. Probably just go to the service.
It's probably just easier to start digging. Either way, the blocks are going to have to be dug up, either way, with the garbage water and hot water.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, we can shut it off. Is that built?
I guess by shutting it off, it'll, and the waterfall stops, it'll confirm that it's not a spring, that it's, hopefully that's the case, that it's not a spring, that it's a, it's a water leak.
I guess I'll make that one issue.
Okay. Motion by Solberg to turn the water off overnight at a time to be selected that's most advantageous for monitoring. On the location that affects this water leak. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Apple, discussion? All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, we'll, we'll contact, why don't you get ahold of Hams? And, and we'll coordinate with yourself in City Hall as far as contacting the property owners. Anything else for Gary? Okay, thank you. Building permits, number three. Robert Tarvin at 221 Eighth Avenue East is a storage shed. Michael Keller is a storage building at his business, 2319 South Dakota Highway 10. Emily Hanson is a privacy fence at 717 Eighth Avenue West. The zoning board reviewed each of these. They've asked Robert Tarvin to put stakes, exact location, to make sure that there isn't any incursion on the alley. That would be a condition of the building permit. He's got a large enough yard there to put this storage shed where it wasn't clearly indicated in the application where exactly what's going to be relative to the alley. So, any other questions regarding those building permits? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll support it.
Stapleton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Solberg, discussion? All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Financial report for September is in your packets. Any questions regarding September financial report? Do you have any comments, Amber?
No, I don't.
Is there motions approved? Motion by Just, seconded by Randolph, discussion? All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Aaron, do you have anything for the council this evening? Okay, we allow time in all of our city council meetings, our regular city council meetings, for a public comment. Now would be that time. Is there anybody that has public comment? Dr. Staub?
Yes, I, I just have a letter to council members of the city. I'm sorry, I have something to say with you.
Okay. All right.
And Delray, can we mail this to them?
Delray.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Staub. Okay. I don't know that we've got anybody. I guess Jason has left the room. I don't know if there's anybody in the public that has commented to him or not. Okay. CHS utility credit. While the fire tower, or while the water tower was down, the fire department made arrangements for some water storage with CHS. It was kind of off of their spray season. They had some storage out there where they put in 30,000 gallons of water, storage for fire protection. That water ended up not being needed, but nonetheless, it went through a meter. And 30,000 gallons of water for their rate out there, what they use is basically a hundred and four dollars. I think it would be appropriate for the council to take action, to give them a credit for a hundred and four dollars on their bill to accommodate that water storage while the upright water storage facility was being completed. We did it as a safety measure for fire protection. Is there a motion?
I'll support it.
Motion by Stapleton, is there a second? Just, discussion?
Let's just have that motion to be for the 30,000 gallons rather than a dollar amount. I'll figure out exactly. It's around a hundred and four dollars.
Okay. Is it acceptable to the motion and the second to revise the motion and then reflect 30,000 gallons? Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. The H-GAC contract for cooperative purchasing. Something that we would like to put in place as we go forward in soliciting the most competitive bids to replace our garbage truck. And as you may recall, I think a year or two ago, we entered into an agreement with a contracting firm to solicit bids, you know, for equipment. And the name of that company, Amber, was...
It's H-GAC.
No, but the year ago.
Sourcewell, I'm sorry.
Sourcewell. Sourcewell, you know, from what I understand, doesn't solicit bids on that type of equipment. So it's, it enables us to kind of broaden our ability to solicit competitive bids instead of just putting it in the local paper. And, you know, I think it improves the effectiveness, I believe, of being able to get competitive bids for equipment. It's quite often that, you know, major institutions, our local hospital, our nursing home, here uses, uses buying groups to solicit, you know, the most competitive bids, you know, for especially these major capital purchases. So I've asked our city attorney to review it. I don't know if he's got any comments regarding that contract.
It's pretty straightforward. You guys have any questions? Do I have any specific articles or provisions I have to ask? It's a straightforward contract.
Doesn't, from what I understand, I don't know that there's an annual fee or anything associated with it. I think they're, they're, part of it counts through, you know, the bid, the bid is accepted, you know, they get a, I'm sure they get a cut of it. That's how they generate their income.
Right, there's no fee involved.
Okay, is there a motion then to, for the, authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with H-GAC by? Motion by Just, is there a second?
I'll second.
Randolph, discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, regarding bids, you know, we did receive bids that were solicited through Sourcewell for Bobcat, John Deere. And those are in your packet. And if you look at the Bobcat bids, there's two bids for S-62. One was received from Bobcat of Fargo and one was from HC Clark, which the HC Clark being more competitive bid. And then HC Clark also bid an S-64 model, which basically the only difference is, is it's got a vertical lift feature as opposed to radius. So when the bucket lifts up, instead of coming back towards the skid steer, the arm mechanisms are such so that lifts, the bucket stays up and down. It doesn't go into a radius. So it, it makes for easier loading into trucks to have, you know, that vertical lift feature. So, you know, the council has to decide whether or not it's not impossible for the skid steer, you know, to be used. But it's, it's a little handier to have a vertical lift feature. So you can see that if you go with the S-64, you know, basically what you're talking about is about, looks like an extra 32,000 versus, but it's less than $2,000. About $1,600 difference for the feature. And the Deer contract, the Deer deal, 58,000, that's the bid on that, 58,733. So that's nearly $10,000 higher than the Bobcat, with basically the same specs. So any action by the council regarding the acceptance of any of those bids?
I'll make a motion on the S-
I'll make a motion on the S sixty-four.
Okay, motion by Apple to approve the bid for the S sixty-four vertical lift, Bobcat skid steer holder.
I'll second.
Seconded by, so, discussion?
What would they do with the old one, Carrie?
Pardon me?
What are they gonna do with the old one?
It'll probably end up being surplus and we'll, we'll look at selling it. Once we get delivery on the new one, it'll be action that another council need. Probably look at other property that potentially we can have to surplus during the time next evening. Unless somebody in the council has thinks we got another use for it. I don't, although Meyer has indicated that we need a second skid steer or anything. Okay, do you have a vote?
We need a vote.
All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the baseball complex, it's, uh, the old concession stand there, there's some soffit work that needs to be done. And basically, what they would like to do is match the soffit to, uh, the soffit and fascia to the other buildings that they have out there. The soffit on the south side of the building is in major need of repair. And I guess for the sake of kind of coordinating all the buildings out there, it'd be kind of nice to be able to match the soffit and fascia of that building with the rest of the stuff out there. So this quote was obtained earlier to be, is this quote still good?
I don't know. I wasn't able to get in touch with him, so, I don't know.
Well, we could take an action to approve his quote and if he, and if he, uh, he didn't, he didn't say this expires at a certain time.
I mean, I guess it says estimate on here, so it's not necessarily a quote, but...
Well?
Can we do a motion and then have him say not to exceed a dollar amount?
Could do that.
To exceed twenty-one hundred dollars or something?
Okay, is that your motion?
No, that's my motion.
Okay, Just, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Stapleton, discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have an application for the federal assistance. You know, we've talked about this before. We have up to twenty-two thousand dollars that's available to the city through the, uh, uh, American Rescue Plan. Basically, it allows us to be able to use grant funds for, for related operations, mainly for using for, for purchase of fuel for the, for the airport. So basically, this formalizes that application, authorize the mayor to sign the application. Yeah, Amber, do you have any other comments?
If they could include authorizing you to sign the agreement, because that will come to you in an email once this is submitted.
So the motion would be to authorize the application and, uh, sign the application and the agreement when it's forwarded for electronic signature. Motion by Just, is there a second?
I'll second.
Randolph, discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, resolution twenty twenty-one dash four is kind of an annual housekeeping type of resolution where, uh, we set aside forty thousand for street department equipment, thirty thousand dollars for police department equipment. Amber, do you have any other comments regarding that? Everybody understand the resolution? Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash four? Motion by Randolph, is there a second? Just, discussion? All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the second reading of ordinance six seventy-eight, which is our annual salary ordinance. Was published in the paper.
It doesn't get published until after the second reading?
Questions? Is there a motion then to approve the second reading of ordinance six seventy-eight? Stapleton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Apple, discussion? Roll call vote.
Brittany Apple?
Aye.
Joseph Just?
Aye.
Paul Stapleton?
Aye.
Lee Solberg?
Aye.
Connie Randolph?
Aye.
Dori German is absent.
Okay, the motion is approved. Ordinance six seventy-eight is adopted. Some discussion items here, uh, we already alluded to code enforcement. They're gonna be in town on the fourteenth, which is Thursday. If there is anyone in the city council that has properties that aren't on their list right now, that you figure that they should be, that should provide a warning letter, please provide the address of those properties to City Hall, so we can convey that to code enforcement. They're here on Thursday. Any other discussion regarding that? Okay.
Are they doing, um, businesses as well or just? They are doing this essence, yes.
So, and then for another discussion item, you know, we solicited bids, uh, some time ago for, uh, putting steel on the old shop building. We're getting into the fall of the year, that type of thing. Probably not the best time to look at doing that. But maybe for another topic of discussion, maybe something we can consider doing at the same time. We do have the open storage building outside, my directions here, this way. And, you know, basically it's, you know, by its cover or roof. But I don't know how much it would take to enclose the east side of that and have a door there and have a totally enclosed building there that would have more utility than what we've got there. And perhaps, you know, we could look at maybe doing that. You know, let me solicit the bids, because it's kind of the same kind of work, basically a lot of steel work. This is something we should consider. I'm bringing it up for, for discussion.
It makes the building more useful now. Just sit sort of one trailer and make it front and then...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Carrie, would we want to look at putting concrete down too, so it keep that?
Possibly.
So to put doors in it, you know, have to have some kind of footing.
It would, um...
In that building, that, that is concrete floor now.
Is it all?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's concrete floor.
Perfect.
With drainage to the outside.
Yeah.
Okay.
We may need to add a concrete apron or something like that off the east side of the front, you know. If we put it, it depends upon what kind of door we put in there. You can spend a lot of money on a door, an overhead door. I don't know if it's built for an overhead door or not.
I think it's a bifold door.
Rollup would, would probably work. So, but if you, I don't know, uh, it's kind of late in the year to be looking at soliciting those bids, but I think maybe as we go through the winter months here, if people start to work line up for next spring, I think that's something for us to look at.
I think I would try to bid like this winter before we get work lined up.
Yeah.
And the prices come down a little bit?
Yeah, they have. It's came some. Hopefully they keep going though.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll pursue that. We'll, um, perhaps, you know, put that on the agenda here, perhaps as early as our November meeting then to maybe authorize soliciting bids for that process. Okay, the other item is property maintenance ordinance. I've asked Erin to kind of, you know, take a look at this. And I guess for today, it's just discussion to get feedback to her as to what to perhaps incorporate into an ordinance for us to consider, perhaps as early as our November meeting. When code enforcement took a look at our properties, he said, you know, looking at it, we've got some gray areas regarding things like, you know, paint on buildings, condition of roofs, condition of windows, uh, those types of things. And he said a lot of his communities that he works with, they have more specifics and, uh, if you can get into this regarding some of the condition of the buildings. You know, paint, mainly paint, roof, windows, those three things.
Our ordinance is currently, or geared more towards absolute nuisance, public nuisance type thing. And that is something that interferes with other people's ability to use or enjoy, et cetera. The condition sometimes of structures doesn't fall under that unless it's a dangerous condition. And so what he's trying to do is encapsulate some of the areas that may not be covered to the extent that we could do something. Could we do it potentially, but with passing this, there would be more of a black and white versus the gray area that we're in right now.
So input from the council?
So what would their, uh, outcome be if they couldn't afford to do this? Like was that that thing in the bigger cities, they, uh, have more options and then like when they would send them on a letter, they would give them options and like if they were low into where they could get help to re-roof and, and paint their homes and stuff like that?
I think that's stuff that we have to consider because our economic areas probably a little bit more depressed than Sioux Falls would be. And you are going to be asking people who may not be able to afford certain things to fix those. So if there's a question about putting food on somebody's table versus painting their house, I think we all know what the answer is gonna be as to what they do.
So he kind of said too that they would...
So I think that when you look at adopting something like this, you have to consider those things and look at potential avenues in our area for assistance, if, and if there's any. We do have youth groups that come in the summer sometimes and they'll paint different structures. Do we want to try and facilitate work with something, some group like that? Those are different types of options you can look at. Roofing is probably gonna be a whole other story because that's probably gonna be our most expensive thing. And you need people who know how to do it, do it. Windows would probably be secondary. That's the conversation we would need to have as to how we would implement something like this, because I do think that we would need some sort of additional, um, avenues to proceed with if, if the people can afford it.
He had mentioned, excuse me, out there that, uh, they had, uh, information, like say that, uh, they don't call it the cap office anymore.
Wrong.
Bureau of Prop. They, uh, they, they do shake houses. A lot of times, people just don't know about it.
Exactly, and if...
So if you gave them the information, they don't know.
Gather that information so it can be provided to people. And typically, the grow type money is, they do take security on house for a period of time. And it's, if they live in it that period of time, it just slowly goes away. There's different things like that that we could look into, but I do think if we do something like that, we've got to be cognizant of the fact that some of the, some of the residences and or businesses may not be able to just outright fix something or paint something once we request it. The example he provided us is based upon what the city of Burke did. Burke is a community that's slightly smaller than Sishtan. And so if he's working with, uh, different communities that are that big, I, it, it's not your Sioux Falls. It's something that's more comparable to Sishtan. And I think if we look at avenues that they've explored with regard to economic issues with these, we can come together with something that we pass and work with our residents to try and utilize different things available to them to get things fixed. I know in the past, we've, um, we've tried to assist if we know there's different funding available to them, depending upon what the issue is. I've reached out with people and we've managed to accomplish things that way. But if we have stuff in place when this would pass, I think it's important because I think we will run into it. I have reviewed this. I don't have any issue with passing anything like this. I think that it's probably something that would be beneficial as a whole. But again, I do think it's important that we take your, your question into consideration while we do it.
Other input, other discussion?
I think it's important to look for other, like housing rehabilitation programs and what they're doing. There's also that responsibility that comes with homeownership, so I see both sides of it. But I do think if, if we do pass this, it would be important to look at what options.
Well, one thing, one thing I know that there, just from my work in doing households and some stuff, depending upon where funding comes from for certain things or certain portions of the mortgage, if, if it is a grant through somewhere like that, there's a lot of educational class type things available to people, and I don't know if that's something that we want to look into to try to capture these people who are first-time homeowners to give a little bit of education as to what goes into homeownership. Because if you've never owned a home and you're coming from a rental structure where they moved your snow and mowed your lawn and fixed your shower, jumping into that where all that's your responsibility is sometimes overwhelming for people. So I think if we reach out to grow in facilities like Grow who have those first-time home buyout type thing and see if, if there can be education classes that maybe we can host at City Hall or something like that. So you do try to address that issue too, along with recognizing that sometimes you just had a hard year and you know your roof needs to be replaced, but just haven't been able to decide on the fourth.
Other input?
Well, is it general consensus then that we go forward then with an ordinance that we take action on? Similar to the example that has been given us in that we, at the same time that we look at enacting that, we also check with Grow South Dakota, potentially check with, uh, the tribe and any other agency that we can think of in the area here that may be of resource to people you know, to deal with things like, you know, maintenance of their home, mainly to replace the roofs, windows, paint, those types of things as resources, if their financial resources are limited.
Okay. Here for the end of the agenda. The council member reports. Connie, do you have anything? Lee?
I was just gonna ask if you had time to reach out to the engineers about the skating thing?
I haven't.
Okay. I have turned back for a moment. I'm not sure Amber has yet. Think we're kind of giving up.
Can we just move forward with Rawls and Stan?
Yeah, would we feel comfortable just using Rawls' knowledge of earthwork and have him just do the project? When I talked to the engineers, they said they would just probably just put some clay on top of what's already there and just make it sloped to one end and not mess with the material they need, thinking it's all fill. Just put a six or eight inches of clay on top of that, I hear.
Then how would you, you would, you would have to get it, you'd have to have a drain system.
Yeah, it's just sloped to one end and then just the pipe going out with the
The valve?
Valve of some sort that we could probably have, either Mike could put in or we could hire hands or another plumber to put in. I don't think it'd be too serious. Just a way to drain it. Unless we move on it quickly, I don't think it's gonna get done this year, and I think we're kind of scheduled to have it done this fall. I know, but local engineers, feelings on it and it's not like they're jumping on it, so. Like, do we feel comfortable without having an engineer, just having Mike do it?
We have an idea what it's gonna cost.
I thought you'd give us a rough estimate to Meyer and Curly.
The estimate he provided was seven thousand six...
The estimate he provided was $7,006.28.25.
That was three hundred clay, and two. Dig out to a solid base, compact and 24-inch average depth impervious clay, 90 feet by 218 feet. So it's basically 1,453 yards. Question would be is to, you know, whether or not he could even get it done this fall too, you know?
Well, he was planning on doing it this fall, if we gave him a go, I think he'll have a Myron's thing, you want to wait till fall.
Price for the drain dude?
No. This is just a dirt work.
That was a lot of two feet of dirt work, taking all the tubes.
But after probably digging through that burrow that's on the east side and draining out to the east, is that where you're putting the pipe? The drain?
Yeah, that northeast corner, I think, because there's a...
And that's where the highest burrow is on the east side or...
And it's actually pretty level, you know, there is a little drainage, when I was up at the engineers, they kind of did their shots and showed me on their computer and thought that I should sit down and design it, but I wasn't comfortable designing it for them.
Have you like an open drain to that storm sewer then, or where they drain it?
Yeah, it would just be a pipe coming out the side and then it'd go down in the storm sewer in that crypt behind that perch building.
And also requires action, is it under the...
It's under, under the bid law, so...
So I guess it would be a matter of authorizing the work and then approving the bill when he bills us.
Probably have it, either him put the pipe in or see if he can hire someone else with that drainage pipe in.
So you're gonna drain it over on the south side way by the old church?
No, the northeast of that. Be the north of the ice gate or any...
Way down...
To the east, yeah. Northeast, right, yeah, behind the cell.
Be in the northeast corner where it would come out, and then it would go into the natural drainage that's there.
Yeah.
And it doesn't drain onto anybody's property.
Yeah, there's the storm sewer right in that...
Yes, it's a close proximity, it's, it's gonna go right into the, uh, sledding hill drainage way there, yeah.
It could just be as simple as a curb stop.
What's the consensus?
I don't think I have to leave, I'm a little, he's kind of rushing it, I think.
Well, I think we've been waiting.
Yeah, I would say, let, leave it up to Mike and see if he had John or...
It's getting off there maybe, I don't know, depending on the engineers. What does the rec board do about it then? Rec board, yeah, the rec board, uh...
I am, I don't, I mean, I don't believe that we've discussed it, and we haven't met since summer rec stuff.
Erin, do you see any legal implications if we hire Mike to do it and he's not a engineer? I mean, why is he holding it?
You're, you're never gonna stop any potential losses, but if for some reason an injury specifically was tied back to the construction of it, potentially, can I tell you if that's gonna happen? No. You know, is it probably a small window? Yeah. It's, you know what I mean?
You know, we're, we're not asking him to construct anything new, we've got the, we've got, we've got the outline of it there, the burrows will stay intact. It's a matter of changing the bottom to get in an impervious bottom in place and putting a drainage in, it's a fairly simple process.
Yeah, what did Eric say, now that he put water in and it just went down?
Yeah, the soil there is, you know, it's, uh, water drips, it's not, it is, if you put in clay, it's gonna be impervious. And it's more of a permanent fix as opposed to putting a liner, if you put a liner in there, you're always gonna be dealing with a liner when you drain the water. You don't wanna have a mosquito habitat in the summertime, you know, you don't wanna have a lake there, you wanna have it dry in the summertime. So, I know we've got two people in favor of it right here, and I'll go the next spot here, are we doing here? We've got one, they've got some questions.
I guess I've seen Mike do a lot of things, I guess I wouldn't be worried about him if he knows what you want.
Yeah.
I think he'd be able to do it.
Okay. We'll, uh, we'll get ahold of Mike and see what he can do to work, and then we'll have to do some coordinating here, uh, probably with hands as far as, you know, or see what Mike, what Mike is, what his thoughts are regarding the drainage, how best to incorporate that, if we need to get a plumber involved as well.
Yeah, I think Mike will do it himself.
Okay, go forward with that then. Anything else then? No.
Or with that skating, we would, we're gonna put some type of siding, probably get that order too, whatever siding is gonna take.
Erin's gonna have lined up around the insider.
I think, I think I had checked into that with our insurance company when, when this first came up, so we maybe have something on file over that.
I would, I would defer to what they're going to really recommend, because something that's just open like that, because we're not gonna have dates or times.
I, I know, I remember them talking about that, that you need to have recommendations, not requirements, because we're not gonna be having anyone there to require things, so...
We could find out from them, we could get that.
Yeah, and I think to begin with, we'd probably look at daylight hours only, and then maybe next year we can look at approving the lighting and expand the hours, I would think. Just getting this done is enough without having to tackle lighting, but I think you better look at the lighting there potentially down the road too. Okay, Paul? Okay, Joel?
I don't think so.
We're gonna have a short meeting tonight, folks.
Now, is this for next meeting?
That's just for your information.
Oh, just for...
I don't have anything this time to discuss, so I'll enter a motion to adjourn. Stapleton, is there a second? Just, discussion? All in favor indicate the saying aye.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Ponton and Thrift for all your con needs, countryside aid, assisted living and memory care in Rawl salt, where your family is our family, First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time, Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels, Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs, water sufferers of reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton, and of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.
Oh, okay. How, how about then, um, on Thursday morning? You wanna do it that way and then? Okay. Um, I, I have some...